Thank you very much, Jim Drake. And good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this afternoon's forum for the Cumberland City Council candidates being broadcast live at 12:70 a.m. WCBC, online at WCBCradio.com. There are five active candidates vying for the two available seats for the city council in the general election on Tuesday, November 8th. This forum is designed to permit the voters of our community to learn more about each of the candidates so they may make an educated choice on election day. The candidates in attendance this evening are David Caparalli, Eugene Frazier, John San Giovanni, and Ben Walters. I'd like to begin by thanking the candidates for participating this afternoon and extend a special thanks to the faculty and staff, the Democracy Committee, and Dr. Rayanne Smith of Allegheny College of Maryland for their work on this event. Now, let's first begin with a request for everyone present to turn off their cellphones. Now, a little information on the format for tonight's forum. The candidates will answer questions submitted by the faculty and staff of Allegheny College of Maryland, members of the Democracy Committee, and the WCBC News Department, and the general public, including those in attendance tonight. Asking the questions of the candidates will be Dr. Rayanne Smith, and Allegheny College students Carlin Riley, Robert Smith, and Lenny Vega, and WCBC News Director Brian Gallens. We will be opening with each candidate introducing themselves and providing an opening statement if they choose to do so. In our final segment, you will have an opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement as well. We will be taking three breaks an hour, approximately every 20 minutes, and they will be three to four minutes each to allow everyone to catch their breath and briefly relax. We will begin with questions that all candidates will be asked to answer, and then switch to a lightning round where each candidate may be asked a different question, and if the other candidates want to chime in at that time, they can signal us and we'll allow them to do so. Now, let's go to our two-minute opening statements, and to begin, David Caparalli.
Good evening. Thank you, Paul. I wanted to also start by thanking everyone from AC, from having me out this evening, and from CBC for tonight's forum. I'd like to look back and reflect, and also thank all the voters from last term. I don't think there's been a day go by that I have taken for granted, being your councilperson. It's been an honor and a privilege for the past four years to serve you. Again, my name is Dave Caparalli. I've been a lifelong resident of Cumberland, Maryland. I currently own and operate Caparalli's Bakery. We recently celebrated our 110th anniversary at our business. So, we have a long history in this community, and I want to see it succeed. There have been a lot of articles recently in the paper, and there have been two other forums up till now. So, there are going to be a lot of topics that we're going to cover this evening to show you where we stand on a lot of different subjects. So, we'll get to those here shortly, but I want to stress that continuing the work that we've begun is essential right now for the city of Cumberland. Like I said, we've had a lot of different projects going on, and I want to see our work through, and that's why I'm running a second term and asking for your vote. Thank you.
Eugene Frazier.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Paul, and thank AC, and thank WCBC for inviting me to participate in this here forum. I've been a lifelong resident of Cumberland. I'm currently just retired back in November from CSX where I worked for 33 years. And I have three kids and three grandkids, five of which reside in Cumberland. And that's one of the main reasons why I'm running for city council, because I want a better life for them. And people that know me will tell you that I'm all about family. You know, I've had guys at work tell me adopt them because, you know, I'm about my kids. And that's why I'm about Cumberland. Cumberland is my family. And I will do everything in my power to help Cumberland succeed. We have a lot of problems, and like Dave said, we're going to talk about them here, and you're going to ask us questions. But the biggest thing is this here is, I will keep every citizen informed of what's going on. I will come to you and ask you, you know, what you think is wrong, and what you think we should be doing. And if I'm elected, I will have forums, at least two throughout the year, so I can talk to people and see what they want. So, my main reason for running too is, like I said, because of my kids and my family in Cumberland. And we have a drug problem, and we have a job problem. Those are my two main concerns. And once again, thank everybody that has supported me so far, and thank you guys again for having me.
Our next candidate, John San Giovanni.
Good evening, everyone. Good afternoon, I should say. Thanks, Paul. Thanks to WCBC. Thanks to Allegheny College of Maryland. I am John San Giovanni, and I, like Gene, am a long-life resident of Cumberland. So, I see value in this city. I've never given up on this town, and I have no intentions of ever giving up on this town. I believe we have a lot of potential. I believe the current administration has started down the right path, and I think it's time to push that agenda even farther. So, I support pretty much, we'll talk about it this evening, but I believe that there are things out there that we still can address. I believe that we have the ability, the skills, and all that we need to move forward. So, it would be my intent to move in a positive, progressive direction. I'm married to my wife, 41 years, Carol Lewis. We have two children, John Jr. and Jennifer. Neither live here in town, unfortunately, but they support their father. They know who he is, and they're pretty proud of him. On the subject of this evening's forum, I would like to make sure, and I think all the guys at the table this evening believe the same, that we address the issues, that we bring it to the public's attention, what we stand for, what we believe in, how we plan to proceed. My goal is to move Cumberland forward. My goal is to make sure we never give up on this town. My goal is to be very active. I've been employed by the state of Maryland for 41 years. I currently serve as an Assistant Director with the Allegheny County Department of Social Services. So, I know government. I know budgets. I know personnel. I know how to manage. I know how to manage with shortfalls and short allocations. So, I believe that I'm fairly well-qualified to assume the duties as a Cumberland City Councilman. I have no qualms about stepping up and speaking my piece, and believing in this city, and believing how we can move it forward. So, that would be my intent. I would appreciate your vote on November the 8th. You can rest assured, you vote for John San Giovanni. You're voting for someone who has this city in his heart and has every intention to make sure we move forward. Thank you.
Ben Walters.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Allegheny County of Maryland, WCBC, and the Democracy Commission. I really value this opportunity to talk to everybody today. This is our last forum that we have, and it gives me an opportunity to, again, introduce myself to the public, to the people of Cumberland. I came to Cumberland in 1977 as a pilot for Cumberland Airlines, and some of you may remember that. That airline is no longer in existence, so I had to find a job somewhere else, and found one in Ohio. We stayed in Cumberland. I chose to live in Cumberland. For 26 years, I drove up and down to snow and ice, to Ohio, to go to work. I could live anywhere in the world, but Cumberland is the place I enjoy. So, we raised our family here, and what I have learned from travels all over the United States, from all the cities I've visited, is solutions to similar problems we have here in Cumberland. And those solutions I want to bring to the table now. So, I'm ready to go to work, retire now. We'll go into the different items and different things we need to talk about as this evening progresses. So, I'll leave it up to you, Paul.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, the opening question will be coming from Brian Gallens, but before we start, we're going to have a general rule of about two minutes and answer, but we don't want you worrying about the time. Mary's going to ring the bell. We're going to let you finish the thought. The idea is the issue, not the time, and I think that's a good way to proceed. Brian, you have the first question.
Thank you, Paul. Gentlemen, if you can hear me, let's start with the Rolling Mill project. It's not been without controversy. In fact, I think one of the candidates referred to the process overall as flawed, and the mayor is on record, as well as the Executive Director of the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation, as saying that eminent domain has not been discussed. However, they stopped short of saying it wouldn't be on the table at one point. Where do you all stand with the idea of eminent domain, a push comes to shove, and the project is moving forward?
All right. Microphone, come back down the table, and first to answer the question will be David Caparalli.
I think we've clearly stated up to this point and prior to, eminent domain has not been on the table and will not be on the table. We've been in talks with several different developers throughout this process. We are at a point now where 90% of the properties are under contract. This is probably something that could have and should have been done 10, 15 years ago. We have absolute access to the freeway from this site, and, you know, this was a part of our economic study going forward. It was very publicized throughout the past two years that this was a target site area. And we spoke with the developer, and we've been moving ever since. Again, I don't know where we stand with eminent domain. It's not been on the table. Thank you.
Eugene Frazier.
All right. First of all, let's say, let me make this perfectly clear. I am not against the economic development part of this plan over there at Maryland Avenue. What I'm against is how they went about doing it. And they say that eminent domain is not on the table. Well, you can go on Facebook at Saber Homes Alliance, and they got a copy of one of the emails there, and it's mentioned right in there that it's there to be used if they have to. And one of the things I'll tell you right now, I said it at the last forum we had, is that I will never vote for eminent domain. Not in this case. Now, don't get me wrong. If we were putting a school there, if we put a highway there, something like that, yeah, I'd vote for that. I have no problem with that there. But to take the homes because there's some businesses there, I'm not for that. Now, another thing that I'm bothered by this is that with these people there, you know, you hear this all about the money with these people. And three of them I graduated with, a couple of them, you know, I've met, you know, and some others I've become associated with, and it is not about the money. They're not there for the money. And the problem I see is, if we don't use eminent domain, then you're not going to get the properties. Because, trust me, I know some of them honestly will not sell, and they're right in the middle of this project. So, that's the problem. And where my problem arose was how this was done. I think this should have been, these people should have been talked to and explained to them, "Look, we want to take your properties and use it for this development area." I think you would have gotten maybe some of these 12 are holdouts, you might have, you know, gotten them. Now, you're not going to get them because they don't trust anybody right now. I talk to them all the time. Matter of fact, one of the people there and I were best friends in high school, you know. So, I do know what I'm talking about on their end of it. On the city's end, I'll admit, I don't know 100% of everything, but I do know this. I would love to see the area developed. I just don't want to step on people to get there.
John San Giovanni.
Well, on the subject of the Maryland Avenue redevelopment project known as Rolling Mill, I support it. I have supported it since the day I announced my candidacy. I understand that there are issues, and I understand that maybe it could have been done differently. I believe we're at a crossroads now, so I think it's time to make a decision. We have an exit, several exits off of I-68. We're one of the few cities that I've traveled through that has an interstate running right through it that doesn't utilize its exits. So, it's part of economic growth and development, more development than growth, because I believe once that project starts, then I think others will come on board. I firmly believe that there are private investors ready to move forward. When it comes to working with those who are left behind, who are still there, you know, I've been a social worker my entire life, so I believe in positive negotiation. I think that maybe we could convince those families there that it is pretty important to our city, and they could donate and devote some time to making improvements, and maybe we could just get over the hump and get to a possible place where everything works well for all. Now, I know people are upset with what happened. I still firmly believe that we can move in a direction that will allow for this to work. I'm not really crazy about the idea of build-arounds, but if it comes to that, maybe that's what we have to do. I don't know that that's the solution. I still like the negotiation piece. When it comes to eminent domain, I'm not a big fan of eminent domain, but I believe we have to find a way to move this project. So, we're at a critical stage. You know, we have all these empty homes now. Something has to be done. Some without windows, some without siding, grass is high. It's time to make a decision, and I believe the right decision is to move Cumberland forward. A corporate tax base that would be generated there, you can't argue with that. It moves us in a direction that will say, this is what Cumberland is, and this is what Cumberland is about, and I think it will help us immensely if we can kind of get moving with the project. Again, I would like to talk to those people and see what we can do to help out. Thank you.
Ben Walters.
The highway came through in 1976, I believe. Realistically speaking, in 1977, we should have been talking about this. It did not happen, and that's fine, but about 10, 11 years ago, we finally got to the point where we rezoned the area into highway commercial. There were no people showing up on the public meetings to be against it or for it. So, it was a done deal. Three public hearings, nobody showed up. So, now we're finally moving forward and doing this through the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. They pulled the trigger on it. Wonderful. When you do something like this, when you start a project right off the highway, it brings the people into Cumberland. There are thousands of people driving through Cumberland on a weekly basis that never stop here. We are the middle between Morgantown and Hagerstown. And if you drive through Cumberland and talk to the people that have driven through Cumberland, you talk to them at the lake or whatever you meet, and say, "I'm from Cumberland," they say, "Oh, yeah. We know the town. It's beautiful. Beautiful steeples. Have you ever been there?" No. No, we don't stop there. And the reason is, is no reason to stop. So, now we're doing it. What I see is a tremendous growth in that area, both sides of the highway. 10 years from now, you won't recognize what's going on. So, I'm totally for it, and the obstacles are not insurmountable. I foresee in a couple of years, that'll all be forgotten. It'll be fine. We'll have the project going. Negotiations is something, it's real easy, it's not hard to do. I've done a couple of projects here in Cumberland, and I negotiated through it, and the project is now on its way. So, I've got experience doing that, but I'm really looking forward to making this thing happen and it go into fruition. It's a wonderful idea.
Okay. We have a couple of 30-second rebuttals. Eugene Frazier, you can go first. Very quickly now.
Yes, sir. At the last forum, that was brought up too, about, you know, how many times it's put in the paper and all, and no one showed up. And I'm one of them that didn't show up. I was out of town. I worked out of town all week long, only home on the weekends. But the thing I said then, I'm saying now, is this here, as a councilman, I won't let that happen to the people in that neighborhood. I will go to that neighborhood and say to them, "Look here, you need to come to this meeting because it's all about you. It's going to affect how you live and where you live." And this is the type of thing that I will do. I will not let it be blindly, or let it happen to them blindly, and that's what happened to a lot of these people.
David Caparalli.
I wanted to get back to, this is all about, and it has everything to do with re-establishing tax base. With a continuing and declining tax base, there are other two things you can do, either cut services or raise taxes. So, this is why we've been getting aggressive with economic development, and the only reason that everybody was not contacted, the CEDC was working towards contacting each individual, but the story was released and made public prior to them reaching out to everyone. And I know there are some people that haven't even come in to speak to the CEDC. So, as far as those people go, if they say they're getting a bad deal, how do they know they're getting a bad deal if they haven't even come in to negotiate at this point? Thank you.
Another rebuttal. John San Giovanni.
I agree with Dave. So, it's time to move an agenda. That's the issue now. We have, I heard Ben say 1977, we've had some, we've had time. It is time to move an agenda. We need to continue the services. I believe, everybody believes in fire, police, EMS services, all those things cost money. People do not want residential taxes raised. I agree with that as well. So, we have to come up with a better plan. This was the plan that was proposed, it was accepted, and I understand there are still issues. It is time to move the agenda, and it's time to see what we can do to help out.
Ben, anything more to say? We'll give you a shot.
Yeah. No, that's fine. The only thing that I did not mention earlier was about eminent domain, and I don't even know who brought that up. It is so inappropriate for this area, I don't think would ever be brought up, and if the city would even think about that, somebody would sue and absolutely win, so I don't think it ever comes to the table.
Okay. Well, very quickly then, nobody wants to use eminent domain.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, how many would take it off the table completely right now? Raise your hand.
Right here.
So, we're four for four on taking it off the table. So, there you go. We're going to take a short break, and when we return, we'll have more of our candidate forum on 12:70 a.m. WCBC, streaming at WCBCradio.com. Well, thank you very much, Jim Drake, and we are back. We will have more questions about Rolling Mill coming up in the second hour of our debate, our forum here. Lots of them came in while we were having the discussion, and that's what we want to have. We are going to move to our next question, though, from one of our Allegheny College of Maryland students, Carlin Riley. Carlin?
What will you do to assure that Cumberland's African-American community will have a seat at the table when decisions are made which strongly affect them most?
We start off with Eugene Frazier, appropriately, I would say.
Yeah. First of all, they'll have a seat if I'm a city councilman, okay? And that's true. But anyhow, I would reach out, you know, like I'm a member in the WCP, you know, and then I help here at the college too with their group. And so, I will definitely reach out and talk to, you know, my black constituents. And like I said, and basically, I know, I'd say, a good percentage of the blacks in Cumberland, so I will make sure that, you know, this happens. I will have, like I said before, I will have, you know, little town hall, I said before I called it forums, but town hall meetings I will have, I mean, at least twice a year. So, hopefully, I'll get them to come to those meetings there, and like I said, and I will make sure through, I'm probably related to half the people in Cumberland, and that is the truth. I'm not just saying that. And so, you know, I will make sure that I get the word out in our community, I mean, what's happening. Just like I said before about the Rolling Mill project, you know, when it affects them or it affects you, I'm going to make sure that you know it from me.
Next is John San Giovanni.
Well, I would include everyone, black, white, doesn't matter. Been a social worker all my life. I can't stress that enough. I work with all populations. I can't imagine not bringing everyone to the table, no matter what the issue is. Being an Italian-American also, I understand those pieces and how they fit into your lifestyle and what can happen. So, that's important to me, that everyone is heard, African-American, Hispanic, it's important that everyone's heard. I would have, never would have ever even envisioned not including all populations in any decision-making. It's my strong belief that you ask everyone their opinion and make a decision accordingly. I can't see anything that would stop me from changing my mind for that. I just have been active in the community. I've been active for 41 years in a variety of community services, and I believe that all people are important, not color, not ethnicity. I just believe that everybody is a human being, and we all should treat everyone with a little bit of respect, kindness, and goes a long way. I've found that when you respect people, you get respect in return, so it's a pretty promising outlook. Thank you.
Ben Walters.
Yeah. The question kind of surprises me a little bit. I've been in Cumberland now for, like I said, almost 40 years, and I have never noticed any difference of treatment by anybody at all. Now, I come from a nation where we don't have any background for the Netherlands, where there's no racism whatsoever. So, to me, it's all the same. Everybody is the same. And when I went to the NAACP rally a few months ago at the courthouse it was supposed to be, then I realized that that was exactly the way it is. The integration is phenomenal here. That's why I want to live here. This is a great town. So, I believe if you say something, it goes to everybody, and everybody has a chance to react to that. So, to make any special treatments or any special deals, I don't think you have to do that. Cumberland is fine the way it is. I think people can, the city council is approachable. I'm approachable. I've never seen anybody that was not able or willing to speak or interact with any particular group in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Dave Caparalli, you are next.
Thank you. I've always felt lucky to have grown up in the Cumberland area. Most of the people I've known, regardless of your race, you know, we sort of all, we all grew up together. We all played sports together. We've known each other all of our lives. No one is ever discouraged from coming forward, from running for office like Mr. Frazier. And, you know, at the city, we're always trying to fill different committees and different boards. Come out, get involved. It's like we mentioned about some of the meetings that we've had recently, and, you know, there was very low attendance. Come out, get involved, and, you know, I believe that everybody should be proud of their heritage. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Anybody with a retort? We're good. Oh, okay. I saw you fidgeting over there a little bit, Eugene. Eugene Frazier.
I don't want to, you know, make this a big issue right now, but Ben mentioned that there's problems in Cumberland, trust me. You know, you have to be black, I guess, to experience some of them. I, myself, have experienced all through my whole life, you know what I mean? But the thing about it is, I'm a bigger person than the people I'm dealing with. You know, I mean, I look past them, and I do my best to make people accept me for what I am and not to color my skin. And believe me, it happens, it has happened. Growing up through here, I was chased and called the N-word, you know, all kinds of stuff is done to me. You know, so I'm just saying, there are problems here, but we've worked through a lot of them. We have. Don't think we haven't. We come a long way, and I just want to continue to go farther.
Okay. Very good. Robert Smith has a question. You are next.
Making government more democratic is always a demand of the people. Are you in favor of ranked choice voting and any other electoral reforms?
Okay. Do we know what ranked choice voting is? This is not a gotcha question. Let me give you a quick review of it. You would order your choices of who you would pick. If you would have the four of you there, we would have candidate, if you wanted to go candidate A, B, C, and D as your order of preference, and we did not get to a 50% on the ballot, then we would throw out the lowest and recalculate, given what the preferences were. So, that's the way the ranking would go in voting. It's not done here now, but would it be better? John San Giovanni goes first.
John, excuse me. John San Giovanni says, "No. I believe in the popular vote. I believe that whomever gets the most votes is the candidate of choice." And that ranking, oh, well and good, so I guess the premise of that is, if four people, none of them have 50%, you throw out the lowest, and then you re-rank the three that are left? That's what I presume would happen?
Yes.
Well, then I think that, so the people who voted for the fourth person, actually, their vote didn't count a whole lot. So, I believe that the process should be that whomever you vote for, that's how it should be tabulated and counted, and I think that's the way we should go.
Okay. Ben Walters, you're next.
Yeah. It seems like if you do that ranked choice voting, you would have to educate everybody, and I'm not so sure that we could do it in a short period of time or even in the next couple of years. That would also take away the primaries, then. You wouldn't need to have primaries anymore. You could put 20 candidates, everybody does ranked choice voting, and that would be it. And I don't believe that is the right way to do it. I still believe that you have a primary, and then you select two or three or whatever from the party, and you vote for that. So, no, ranked choice voting is not on my agenda.
Okay. David Caparalli.
I disagree as well. I believe that it's unfit, would be unfair to the voters. As far as other reforms, I believe that the current administration has tried to be As far as other reforms, I believe that the current administration has tried to be as transparent as possible, and I think maybe more public meetings or something like that that would keep the public informed as far as reforms go. Thank you.
Eugene Frazier?
Even though it was explained to me, I still thoroughly understand it, but my first response would be, no, I wouldn't go for it. But it'd be something I'd want to look into or talk to you more about, so I thoroughly understood it, because I don't like making decisions on something that I don't thoroughly understand, okay? So, at right now, I'd have to say no, unless you talk to me and convince me otherwise.
All right, next question, WCBC's Brian Gallants.
Thank you. Although they each have an independent board of directors, both Canal Place and the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad have struggled to become viable, both economically and as tourism entities, would you like to see the city more involved?
We start off with Ben Walters.
Well, these, both these entities are not directly related to the city. Of course, we try to be involved and give opinions and help them out, but there is no financial involvement whatsoever, maybe for some tax from the hotels. I'd like to keep it the way it is on their own, and if there are major issues in the future, maybe we can get together, have some meetings and help things out. But individual entities, like the Scenic Railroad and Canal Place, well, Canal Place is state, I'd like to keep it the way it is. And we, as a city, have enough things without downtown, and I don't think to worry about, we don't need to add an additional burden on, with only the five people that we have and the tax base that we have. Because once you start going down that road, so financing, railroad financing, the state entity like Canal Place, I don't know where the city would stop then. So now, I would not want to spend any more right now, I don't think there is any financing available to spend to any other projects than what we have. So for right now, I'd like to keep it the way it is.
We go up the line to David Caparale.
Thank you. I agree that looking to have these, both these entities viable and economically sound over the next few years, it seems like we've been struggling with that for some time, maybe since inception. Now, the city has been involved with both entities through hotel motel tax, whereas Canal Place is, you know, an independent state entity, and the railroad is run by the county. But what I would hope to see for the whole section down through that area would be, as the footer building comes to completion, more activity on the grounds. There has been talk of the possibility of the city maybe helping manage the park area. And lastly, I think the final piece into helping complete that, and have a real flow, something that makes sense for all of downtown, a flow that Canal Place and the railroad isn't separate from downtown, make it a part of it. And I would hope to look in the next few years that the re-watering of the canal could also come to fruition.
Okay. Eugene Frazier?
I'd like to see the city involved more, not necessarily financially, because the better those two organizations do, the better we're going to do. I mean, they bring people here in town to spend money downtown, spend money staying at motels and things like that. So I think we should get a little more involved. Like I said, if we can't do it financially, maybe there's other ways we can go about to help promote them, and so that they do better. And they brought about the re-watering of the canal, I would love to see that there, because I think it would take and help our tourism a lot. Washington County, I read an article about a month or so ago, how well their tourism business is doing. So we can make money for the city, you know what I mean, as well as the county, we can maybe for the state through tourism. So I would want to see us work with them, talk to them, and see what can we do to help them succeed.
John San Giovanni?
Well, I believe both should stay as private entities. They're a great tourist attraction. I do like the idea of having some of Cumberland involvement, maybe parks and recs to help with the grounds. And I do understand the importance of tourism, believe me, I've promoted tourism most of the past 20 years, thinking it was a pretty good idea from its inception. So I like the idea of motel tax, of course, anytime you generate funds, and I'm always in favor of generating funds, as long as it's not residential tax rate increases. I think it's a good thing, I think it draws people to Cumberland, it lets us put the shine on our town a little bit, it's an attraction. So when it comes to like things re-watering the canal and finishing the die works building, I'm all in favor of that. I think that re-watering of the canal has a lot of promise. You ride a train, you ride a canal boat, if you're, you know, if you're ever in the Washington DC area, they have an actual operating canal boat, it's a pretty nice ride. So I think that probably in Cumberland, we could enhance that, because we have the railroad to go along with it. Opening up, the city's involvement, I think, has to be limited. We cannot, we cannot put money towards it. I understand that we are just in a financial position, that we want to keep going with what we have, and adding to the burden is not something I would be in favor of. So I would just like to provide some enhanced services, such as a little bit of parks and recs work, but beyond that, I think should stand on their own. I understand the state is involved heavily in the footer die works, re-works, so that's pretty expensive. I don't have any idea how the city would come up with funding for those types of projects, so I think they stand as they are. We'll use the tourism piece, and we'll promote our city that way.
All right, this is sort of a follow-up, but I've talked to elected officials that are kind of leaning in this direction, one way or the other, and we'll give the microphone to Ben first, just about a 30-second, if you will, or just one word, if you want. Do we have too many boards and commissions out there right now? With, you have the Canal Place, you have this railroad, you have a number of different commissions out there, are there too many?
I don't think so. Canal Place started from a different beginning point, so did the railroad. So they have their own knowledge base, their own abilities to create funds, their own way of doing things, and I don't think you need to mix and put it together, have one or two people do it. I like a variety of people, bring into the forefront their abilities. And that's why, you know, we have five people on the board, so we have five people on city board that come up with different backgrounds, different knowledge base, and I believe we should keep it that way, especially, these are a major attraction for our city, and I don't want to give it to the hands of one or two people.
Okay. Microphone up to David Caparale. We got too many, too few?
Yes, too many. I think I'm on all of them.
Oh, you are?
No, no, actually, no, I don't. I have had the privilege, and that's one of the unique things that I've found since coming to serve as councilman, is how many people are really out there making a difference and working year after year to try and make a difference for their organization. The one thing that I can say that I have seen recently is more work together. You know, it seems like each organization, be it, I'm currently on the museum and Canal Place, but we're seeing more working together with them and the DDC. I think that's important, not to everybody to have their own agenda, but to be working together going forward.
Okay. Eugene Frazier?
I'm not on any, on any boards right now, I hope to be on some, but I think the more the merrier. I mean, because the more people you have involved, I think you'll find, you know, I mean, you'll get more accomplished, you'll have different ideas, come from different people, and also, you'll show that people care. So I'm definitely for, you know, keeping it like it is, and if they end up having some more, it wouldn't bother me, like I said, because I like to keep people involved, people in the community, and now, Dave will know better than I, I mean, I'm sure some of these boards don't have enough people on them, and they're missing people, so, you know, I still would like to see, continue on like it is.
Okay. John San Giovanni?
I agree. I believe we should keep the boards as they are. I think that a little competition and thoughtfulness on each board involved is a good thing. I think working closely, working together is a good idea as well. So, you know, I always promote cooperative, be cooperative, try to get the job done together, working forth, working forward with an effort by all involved. So independent works well, it takes care of what you're responsible for, but it also allows you to share with other people and maybe share some ideas that, excuse me, would be very helpful.
Okay. Lenny Vega has our next question from Allegheny College of Maryland, and to answer, it will be David Caparale first. Lenny?
There is a serious problem with the rate of heroin overdoses in Cumberland. How will you address this as a city council member?
This isn't a news topic, and it didn't happen overnight. It's taken some time, it'll take some time to resolve this issue. We've had a lot of meetings with our chief of police over the past couple of years to see how we can address this issue. I have started to lobby our delegation for the possible repeal or revision of the Good Samaritan law, I think that is being abused. For those who might not know about this particular law, I think it was passed a year or so ago, that if an individual calls the police for an overdose, they are immune from any type of prosecution. I ran into Chief Hennett a while back, and I had asked him, you know, well, all these overdoses that they're having, what kind of leads are they getting to find out where some of this is coming from? And they're not getting any, zero, because what's happening is this was designed to help people, encourage people to call the paramedics, but what's happening is, I think it's being abused and being hidden behind. I also think that any, anything that we can do going forward with police, maybe a multitask force between the state and the county and the city also. Thank you.
Eugene Frazier?
This is an issue that's dear to my heart. I got a 14-year-old grandson, he just started at Allegheny, and I'm Fort Hill, so that bothers me, but that's okay. Anyhow, he plays in the band, I go to games and all. But anyhow, we do have a bad problem of opiates and all. I mean, kids now take pain pills, they steal them off their grandparents, steal them off their parents, you know, and then, you know, like, I talked to my grandson, probably at least a half a dozen times, I've talked to him about this problem and not getting started. But all it takes is for, you know, one of his friends to convince him to try it, and then try it one more time, and the next thing you know, he's hooked. Then he can't get it, then he goes to heroin. So, you know, my biggest thing is this year, as far as the ones that are on it now, yes, I want to help them, I don't want to see anybody die, you know, and so I will continue to help them. I'm sorry, I'm a Christian, I can't let somebody die, so I don't want to repeal anything that's going to cause people not to come forward when they've overdosed. And as far as fighting it, I believe in this. I believe if I educate my kids and your kids, and teach them and show them, you know, take them out and let them see, look, this is what's going to happen to you if you do this, you know, we got to let them know these types of things and keep them informed. And because the one way of stopping it is getting rid of this demand for it, you know, as long as you have a demand for it, there's always going to be a supply. But we need to take and educate our kids, each and every one of them, so they don't want to even start and think about getting on this here, you know? And I've had people tell me, well, you know, he tried to, you know, the scare tactics, it doesn't work. Well, you know what, maybe it doesn't work, but it'll work on some of them, you know? But the biggest thing is, is we have to talk to our kids. And one of the ones we had here, someone commented about, well, we talk to ours, but what about ones don't talk to ours? Well, guess what? We can talk to their kids, you know, we can form neighborhood groups, and believe me, there are parents out there, just like I'm a grandparent, that are concerned about their kids, and they will gladly get together and form groups, neighborhood groups and all, to work with the kids and educate them and do things with them, so they don't get started. If we don't get started, we don't have to worry about them dying from it. Thank you.
John San Giovanni?
So is it a serious issue? Absolutely. I work at social services, I've been there, like I said earlier, 41 years. I have never seen anything take such a toll on society as this problem has taken on our community. You know, the number of children in foster care and kinship care has risen dramatically, dramatically. I can't use names or numbers, I can use numbers. There are at least 147 children in foster care, mainly because of drug problems. Beginning of this year, there were 66 kids in foster care, so the numbers have gone up, and it's related to this problem. So, when it comes to dealing with the problem, you have to deal with it head-on. It came quickly, it's not going to go away quickly. I've seen these issues happen to society before, and it takes a long time to get it out of society's system. So, now, I support law enforcement to work hard to curb the drug activity, you know, police officers need support. And I know at times they get a bad rap, but they have a duty and a responsibility that not many of us want to assume or try to enforce. So I believe that you need to, I believe in a triangle-type of approach, where you work with law enforcement, you develop educational programs, and I know a lot of people don't agree, but there has to be some rehab programs. I have seen successes from rehab programs. Sometimes it's two or three admissions, but you can see a positive result if you put forth that effort. And when it comes to the educational piece, I've seen successes. The DARE program was very successful, and it wasn't beat the kids over the head and drive it through them, it was continue to reinforce the positive approaches that make life different. Stay away from those things, stay away from the drug activity, stay away, and you'll find life to be different. And I think once you reinforce that, it's kind of like, you know, peer pressure in a different direction, it kind of reinforces the fact that I don't want involved in that, I want my life to be different. So for those who do fall and have some issues with drugs, I believe we should try the rehab program. But I also want to emphasize the importance that law enforcement must be supported to curb drug activity.
Ben Walters?
This is, it has been for quite a while now, a major problem in Cumberland, and it is sad, I've driven with the police at night, and to see the people that are afflicted by that is amazing. What our troops are doing, our police officers are doing is an amazing job for what they have. We're all extremely compassionate people here on the table and in the city of Cumberland. We all want to do the best we can for the victims and try to stop the drugs coming in. The only way, I think, that we are going to do anything at all in Cumberland, is if the federal government, and that is not something I can control, if the federal governments are stopping this stuff from coming into this country now. If that happens, the amount of drugs entering this country will severely diminish. At the same time, the American Medical Association has proposed to no longer prescribe opiate drugs for painkillers, for chronic patients, and for young children. And I'm all for that. Some of the parents say we got to prescribe it for our kids, I don't think it's always necessary. So there we have to start. So now we sit in the middle of what happens here in Cumberland. And what happens in Cumberland, our problem, we could deal with with the city, education is a county thing. The city has police, fire, and EMT. So the EMT is now the only thing that we deal with and interact with the patients. We need to strengthen that, and again, that goes back to our tax base. When it comes to the police to arrest the perpetrators that do the crime in order to obtain the drugs, we have to help the police, and the only way we can help, and we cannot increase the tax base overnight, what we can do is streamline the police and make them more efficient. In order to do that, when now a police officer has to arrest somebody, it takes way too long before he is back on the job, between booking them, going to the county jail, to the commissioner, and then to the ACDC. I really want to start a central booking system whereby I will take the police about a half an hour and two and back around, to protect other people from the perpetrators of this violent crime. Given drugs to young people, it's, I don't know what else is worse in this town right now, at this particular moment, it is horrible.
We're going to take a short break, and we will return after these messages on 1270 AM WCBC and streaming at WCBCradio.com. 1270 AM WCBC, we are back live from Allegheny College of Maryland with our Cumberland City Council Candidate Forum, and we are gathering the candidates as we speak, they are getting back in place. And we want to let you know that in our second hour, we have many more questions to get to. We will get to a lightning round where we will have quick answers, but the answers that we've had so far have been great. Gentlemen, I appreciate that. David Caparale had a rebuttal, a 30-second rebuttal coming to the opioid question, and we'll go to him first.
It's a lot to touch upon, I think our last forum, we probably spent maybe half of our whole entire show on just drug abuse. I think one of the things that I hear, and anybody that's involved in the school system will know, there is a concern for the children, but, you know, some of the parents, maybe the ones with an issue too, you know? So what you're doing is, is there any way that we can help the children get out of this sort of cycle? I asked the gentleman here at the last forum, you know, I remember growing up here in the 80s, and in the 80s, all you heard about was the crack epidemic, but you didn't really see it here necessarily, because there wasn't a demand for it, and there wasn't people here doing those kinds of drugs, and there wasn't drugs in the newspaper every day as a result of it. Alluding to what Ben said about stopping it from coming to the country, also, I think we need help from the federal level with prescription drugs. A lot of these issues that we have stem from the prescription drug abuse, and I think it's a close second runner-up to heroin.
Okay. Thank you very much. Eugene, you want to chime in? 30-second rebuttal here, go ahead.
Okay. Everything Dave said there was good, and he took some words out of my mouth. But, you know, one of the things we have a problem with around here is, a lot of people think it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect me, the drugs don't affect me, it's not me. Well, listen, it does. First of all, I have family members that have, you know, been affected by this year. I had a nephew stay with me for a while, because his mom was in, you know, jail. And it does affect you, because, you know, whether it be a relative, a friend, or just somebody in the street, crime has went up, 90% of the cases over the courthouse, Judge Getty told me this year, are drug-related, you know what I mean? So it does affect you. So that's why we need to get people involved, let them know that this problem is all of our problem, not just yours and yours.
Okay. John? Okay, 30 seconds.
So I would agree. So I still say we have to become active. It's not going to go away, you have to put forth an effort. It's a community effort, it needs to be done on a community basis, and community to me, you incorporate the city of Cumberland, you, when you say children, you, our kids in Cumberland go to city, go to public schools, so it's, it is an issue that the community must address, and I think maybe we should look at things like what Governor Hogan's proposed through his initiative. I think we should take advantage of anything that's available and try to put forth an effort, an honest hardcore effort to curb this problem. Again, I've seen the social wheels that it's caused, and I'm telling you, it is time to make a change, it's time to step up.
Ben, you want another 30? You got it.
Yeah, I'll pipe in on this one. I touched on the American Medical Association trying to stop the prescription of opiate drugs to chronic patients. And now we find out that the pharmaceutical companies are lobbying arms against that. They want to push more opiates. It's a kind of a surprise. Even the American Cancer Society wants to open up opiates more, and I can see their up opiates more. And I can see their point. They are helping, you know, long-term patients, chronic patients. I can see their point. But what we need to do as a community, I believe, if you really want to do something, call your congressman, call your representative and say, stop these lobbying people from creating a higher demands for these opiate drugs, because we're the ones that have to deal with it, both on a human level and on a financial level.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I want to point out that the other candidate, Joshua Grace, was invited to come tonight. He chose not to be here for reasons we don't know. But we have four candidates here, and we will continue with our forum. Dr. Rayanne Smith has our next question from Allegheny College of Maryland.
Yes, thank you. It seems that Cumberland has a history of making great plans for bringing businesses to the area, and they often fall through. Some examples in recent years have been Willa Brook Marketplace, the microbrewery and restaurant at Futter Die Works Building, and Friendly's Restaurant at Canal Place. What do you think is the reason behind these failures? And what is your strategy to make Cumberland more attractive to companies looking to start up here, so they don't get frustrated and look elsewhere?
Eugene Fraser goes first.
All right. Why they failed, I can't really say. I would have to guess, in some cases, people didn't follow through what they said they were going to do. But one of my plans, well, you know, I want to see, first of all, I'll take any job that we can get in Cumberland, whether it be a restaurant, or store, or whatever. But I want to proceed and talk to places like Amazon, Walmart. When I say Walmart, I'm not talking about Walmart, you know, stores, and Lowe's and places like that. I will, as a councilman, I figure I have a little more clout to talk to them. So what I want to do is go to places like them and talk to them and say, look here, what do I need to do to get you to bring a distribution center here, a warehouse here? Because these types of jobs, you know, pay in your mid-teens and above. You know, you can't live off of $10 an hour, much less minimum wage. Just figure it out in your head. I mean, it's not very much money. By the time you pay your rent, if you've got a kid, and you've got a car and everything, you're just barely making, you're living from paycheck to paycheck. So we need jobs that pay anywhere from mid-teens and up. And so these are the types of jobs that I'm going to try and, you know, get for Cumberland. I got lucky. I worked at railroad. I made great money. So I had a good life. The Lord's blessed me, you know, and he continues to bless me every day that I'm here. But like I said, I worry about my kids. My daughter, she's married to a Navy man. She wants to come back here when she gets out. But guess what? There's really no jobs that she can have. So my goal is to develop places here where she can have a job, and people around here can have jobs. You know what I mean? And like I said, and not have to live from paycheck to paycheck, and be able to take their kids on vacation, be able to get their kids the necessary things they need in life, you know? So that's my goal. And those are the types of jobs I'm going after. Like I said, I won't turn down any job. If McDonald's, put another McDonald's out here on 68 somewhere, fine, we'll take it. But my goal is to get out here and talk to the places, like I said, with warehouses and distribution. I've talked to people that have kids that work at these down in Frederick and other places. And that's the type of money they are making, and that's the kind of jobs I want to get. Also, one more thing, I'd like to get more of the high-tech jobs type too, you know what I mean? In the computer field and all too. And I'm going to do a lot of traveling. This job is going to be full-time for me. I worked at the railroad. I was full-time, was out of town all the time. Well, guess what? When I get this job, I'm going to be out of town a lot too, because I want to go find and bring back places that will come here and look at this place and say, yes, we'll come here and we'll put a place there for you.
John San Giovanni.
Dr. Smith, to answer your question, I really don't know why some of those places didn't come to fruition. I would take it, there's a lot of things behind the scenes we weren't made aware of. Part of my platform is to have an economic development plan that would allow for some type of expansion. That's why I support things like the Rolling Mill Project, because I look for ways for us to gain a corporate tax base and good jobs that come. Now, I agree that a restaurant, whatever, that doesn't bring the big dollars. But once you start up down an economic process, a plan, once you start that in motion, it could move in different directions. I would depend on things like the Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. We have some things in place, some people with some abilities. Maybe we should capitalize on the newly formed CEDC. E, Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Yeah, put a C on that. I think there's some value in relying on people who have some experience, and who could move forward with an agenda that could attract people. I would like to see me, as a city councilman, be involved in, much like Eugene, you know, I worked for the state, but not much longer. And June 30th is the magical day of retirement. And it's 42 years at that point, so it's time. I believe I have the skills, and I represent a city that I've lived in all my life. So I think I could be kind of the poster child for, why would you come to Cumberland? I've never been short on words, and I can talk a lot, as you found out tonight. So I believe that I can promote our city and maybe overcome some of those humps, and work with whatever is out there to help bring Cumberland to the forefront. You know, I know, and I think everybody knows, we're never going to see another Kelly Springfield Tire Company come to Cumberland, Maryland. Okay, those smokestack industries are gone. So we need to look at other options. You know, the high-tech, whatever is available. I'll take 200 jobs, whatever comes along. But I think we can put forth an effort with effort. You have to put forth a plan, and I think we have to follow through with it. That's what I'd like to see happen.
Ben Walters.
Well, the sad failure of these negotiations, and we're all very hopeful in Cumberland, of course. But these are negotiations between private entities. There's no way of knowing what exactly happened and why these endeavors are not going any further. So in the meantime, what we need to do is go for what we have, and what we know we're going to do. And rolling mills is the one. And it is not the end result that I'm into. It's not the restaurants are going to be there. That's not what matters. What happens now is, and I said this before, if you drive through Cumberland, you drive through Cumberland. What we need to do is put a sign up that says, we are in business. Come visit us. We have the best area for tourism you could possibly find. Every town has tried tourism, when they failed in their other industries. And Cumberland has actually something to offer. So to get them off the highway, if I put a sign out there that says Olive Garden, and I just named this, that means for the people to travel through Cumberland, there is a place where it is safe, because Olive Garden will not build anywhere where it's not safe. And where it's safe is, and secure is where the money flows. It's not the Olive Garden. It is the construction thereof. We start with the trades going to work. We start digging holes. We get the plumbers to work, the roofers to work. Those are the people that make the money. And if it's on one side of the highway, it's going to go to the other side. So the trade always works themselves out of a job, next job, continue on. The follow-up at entry-level jobs, and boy, we need them. What we need in Cumberland is not, you know, cheap jobs. That's not what I'm talking about. Entry level means, there's a lot of people who still need to learn how to work. Believe me, I got fired from my first job in three weeks flat, and I thought I was doing a bang-up job. My boss didn't think so. I did not know how to work. I have to learn that. So we have to give youth the opportunity to learn how to work. And the more of those jobs are available in the beginning, the more people we get to work. What's happening in Cumberland is, from the graduates of high school, the top 25%, we only maintain roughly 2%. Now normally, it's a large percentage of those people that go out of town anyway. The reason is they go to college, and they come back. Some of them do. It's the second group that worries me the most. The second 25%, we only retain about 10 to 13. Now, those people, those are going to be our business people, our craftsmen. Those start a small business, and that's what will fuel our economy. So we got to keep people working here, and that's the beginning.
Okay. Up to the other end of the table with the microphone, David Caparale.
I think if my history serves me correct, the Willa Brook Road was an early release of information and led to a landlock of some sorts at there. The Futter's is another situation. You know, the Canal Place concept and vision is 20 years in the making. It was never supposed to take this long. But I think that is why it's so important that the Futter's building is on schedule and will be completed on target time. This is another thing, we're going back to each, on almost every subject, is studies. You know, years have gone by, and we pay for these studies. And in recent years, you know, we've put them on a shelf and ignored them. Well, over the past few years, we've implemented our studies. You know, we've kicked that can down the road before. We're almost out of cans. So implementing our studies, we are still working with our economic study. We're continuing to move forward with it. We've been working hand-in-hand with the developers since the very beginning at Rolling Mill, completing two city blocks up there. We had the pleasure of the most recent governor's visit to tour the M and T building. The M and T building is going to be developed into a boutique hotel. It's being donated. So I think that this administration, for various reasons, and our work with the CEDC, we're implementing our studies, and we're trying to see the projects that we have on the table follow through with. I did have a quick, ma'am had a question in the back regarding the Good Samaritan. I was going by what was reported to me by various law enforcement. I know there has been a lobby by different law enforcement organizations regarding that particular law. And it was also brought up at the governor's roundtable recently at the sheriff's department. So it is on the radar, and it's worth talking about. Thank you for your questions.
Very good. The CEDC, let me follow up, 30-second, if you will, gentlemen. Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. We'll start with Eugene. Is it a good idea, or should you bring it back inside of city government? Go ahead.
I think city government should be more involved. I think I said it at the last thing. And someone brought about using the experience of CEDC. And to me, their experience isn't as good as it should be, because we wouldn't be in where we're at with their rolling mill project. Like I said, you know, here's the thing about the rolling mill project. If we don't use eminent domain to take those properties, then you got properties in the middle, you got properties on both sides. So how are you going to develop around it? I'm not saying it can't be done, but it won't look nothing like they envisioned it.
John San Giovanni.
CEDC, I think it is valuable. I do believe that maybe there could be a little more cooperation between city and that organization. But it's in its infant stages. It's just starting. So I think you capitalize on what you have from the beginning, and you work hard together. Spirit of cooperation never hurts anything. So I firmly believe that with some effort, and I emphasize the word effort, everything that I've seen in the past six, eight months requires effort. I can't see why we couldn't work together. I think it's a valuable entity. It works other places. I think we should give it a chance.
Ben Walters.
CEDC is made up of our best and brightest business people here in Cumberland. They have invested a lot of money individually. And as a group, they will definitely help us out. So I think it's a wonderful idea. As a matter of fact, it's way overdue. Here we have, again, go back to rolling mills, that project started like 10, 11 years ago through zoning. It was a CEDC that finally pulled the trigger on and said, here we go. And I expect them to do that continuously. So no, I don't want to cut it off. Cooperation between the city and the CEDC is good. The financial is interlocked. And I do not think that city fathers should make a big business decisions and not include our best business people here in town. CEDC is a great thing.
Okay. David Caparale, you get the last word.
Really?
On this question.
Well, not to offend anyone up here, or, you know, include myself in this, but not everyone that comes to these positions every four years is an economic expert. I think that is where we look to design the CEDC. I am very involved. I'm in constant contact with their office. I think it was one of the most important decisions that we have made this term. It gave us a new direction at a time that I believe that we needed it the most. And I think a lot of the things that we have going on now are a result of the formation of the CEDC.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a short break. And when we return, more questions for the candidates here on 1270 AM W C B C, streaming at WCBCradio.com. And you are listening to the Candidates Forum for the Cumberland City Council from Allegheny College of Maryland's Continuing Education Center on 1270 AM W C B C and online at WCBCradio.com, presented by Allegheny College of Maryland, and the Democracy Committee, and WCBC. With our next question is Brian Gallants.
The current plan on the table for the downtown mall is to reopen each end to vehicular traffic and limited parking, and also close the, keep the section in the middle closed. When the governor was in town recently, he was heard to say that it's been his experience that malls should be there open end-to-end for traffic, or kept as pedestrian to be successful. What's your reaction to that?
We go with John San Giovanni first.
So once I reviewed the Sage report, and I thought it was a pretty well-done report, and I understand the process, so I come on board with, I believe we should at least try and see what happens. The infrastructure under the mall now needs not to be repaired. It needs to be replaced. So I think, if you're going to tear up the bricks, and I hate when people refer to it as tearing up the bricks. You're not going to tear up the bricks. You're going to put them back down. We're going to kind of enhance it a little bit. And within that, we allow for one lane of traffic, which I believe, talking with business folks on the mall now, they would like a little more visibility. I believe one lane of traffic, it's not going to be a racetrack. It's not going to be a thoroughfare. It's going to be one lane, similar to what we have on Center Street, with some inlet parking. It will provide visibility downtown. It certainly, it expands the sidewalks. We're talking at least 23 feet wide on the sidewalks. So it's not like the outside dining will disappear. I don't believe that we should just scrap ideas or say, that's the way we've always done it. Because I hear, well, that's the way we've always done it, and look what it's gotten us. So I believe that we should try new innovative ideas. And I believe this is an innovative idea. We're talking about the boutique hotel. I think that probably front access to that building would be what something those investors would like to see. I believe it allows for older people, or people with some disabilities who would like to come downtown, and don't want to park blocks and blocks away to run into a small, independently-owned business. It would provide them some almost front-door parking access. And I think that's important. And I also think that maybe people driving through Cumberland, investors will say, see something that they, that might attract them, and allow them to think, maybe I could put something small downtown. So I think it has a lot of promise, and I believe we should open it and give it a try. Remember, we're not closing off to farmer's market, the Friday evening events. We're not stopping the ball drop. It's going to incorporate everything into the same plan that we have now. It allows for all that, and I think we should at least look at it and give it a try.
Ben Walters.
Well, I'm going to give away my age right now, because I still remember driving through Baltimore Street, and coming from work at night, from the airport at 4:30 in the morning, and going to the club car for breakfast and parking right in front. And that was nice. But I tell you, if I tried that at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, no parking place. It was always full. What I'm trying to say is, I've seen the Sage report. I've read it multiple times. And it makes some sense, especially for the hotel to have access to the road. I've also talked to the people who have outdoor dining. I have seen outdoor dining changed, Auto Vianney's area was being repaired. They had no outdoor dining, except for two tabletops in the front, along Center Street. And I was standing there, talking to people while they were eating, and the smell of the automobiles while you were eating was atrocious. So I'm sure Auto Vianney is happy that they have their dining area back. I'm not against any growth, economic growth whatsoever, but I want to be very careful how I do this. I don't want to destroy businesses that are premised, that business model is based on the mall being closed. Every business on the mall right now, except for, I believe, one, their business model is based on the mall being a pedestrian area. All buildings have been traded and sold, with the mall being a pedestrian area. Their business model is based on that. So the Sage report is a great idea, but it is missing one thing. And the one thing was to do no harm clause. And normally, we have a study, you start with, if I don't do anything, what will happen? They did not do this. So why didn't they do this? Is nothing going to happen? Was the traffic at Baltimore Street in 1978, '79 busy because we had all these cars driving around? Or was it because we had Kelly Springfield, PPG, and Saloon East? I say the latter. So I do not want to destroy any business. If we go forward, we go forward slowly. This is what I want to say, right now, I think, tonight, make an idea happen. Open the mall on the east side right now, tomorrow. Open it up to traffic for one year. And then you can compare and say, we have a business increase on the east side, sales increase from the businesses, compare that to the sales figures last year, and do the same thing on the west side where it was closed. Then differentiate the two. We can do it for a year long and see what happens. The money to do this is not available right now. We'll have to wait for it anyway. So let's do a test, a one-year test, open the mall on the east side and see what happens.
Okay, we go to the other side of the table now. David Caparale, your answer.
Thank you, Paul. Actually, at this time, funding is being lined up for this particular project. It's looking very good for it. Again, the can and the road. You know, this is a study that we conducted. A plan was proposed. And this is a 40-year-old plan, the previous one, that has not worked. I don't disagree with anyone. The downtown's not beautiful, but is, do we want to park, or do we want a vibrant business community? The plan was done by a world-renowned economist, who has worked directly with the Hogan administration. As far as the smell of the automobiles, you're not any closer or farther away than the people at Baltimore Street right now, with Liberty Street and Center Street going through. So you add in the potential for the development of the M and T building. I have heard of two other buildings that could be potentially in play as a result of this plan. Going back again, I support full implementation of the plan. We have a letter of support from our delegation supporting full implementation. But I really think the bottom line with this is putting consumers back in touch with businesses again. Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Eugene Fraser.
I'm in favor of opening up the mall. I talked to a couple of businesses down there, and you know, they would have preferred to see, like Ben has said, only open up the east end, you know, so. Because I don't want to hurt the existing businesses there that have paid their dues, so to speak, and are doing well, you know. And one of the things about opening up the mall all the way through, what it would do is take away from one of the businesses outside dining, which they say is a big part of their business. So I want to work with them some- So I want to work with them somehow so we don't hurt them. Anyhow, you know, malls were enclosed back, I think it was in the seventies, you know, all over the United States, it was a big popular thing to do. And since then, I read a study, like 80% of them have failed and most of them have opened back up because it just didn't work. You know, as we can see here in Cumberland, it hasn't worked. And by opening up the mall, what you will do is, I think John alluded to this here earlier, what you would do is, you know, people will be able to take and come down, drive through, you know, look and see if, oh, it's not too busy in the store there so they can go in, you know? Or they can park, go pay a bill, whatever, because there's going to be parking on both sides going down through there. So that'll allow for that there. And let's face it, you know, the way it is now, we have, we're lazy. I said that earlier, that people are lazy anymore. I gladly walk anywhere, but people won't walk 10 feet alive, people won't. I mean, and so yeah, there's parking at the garage and things like that and all, but people won't park and walk over there. So if we can allow for them to come down through town, I think our businesses will do better. And, you know, another thing is, I gotta look at myself, sorry about that there. I want to talk about the bicycle lane. I am totally for bicycles. My son rides them, I ride them. But in this case here, one of the things proposed was a nine-foot bicycle lane down through town. In this case here, I wish that it would be not included and that was brought up at one of the meetings and they said it's a possibility it could not be included. And the reason why, because it's nine more feet that could be given to, say, the one business there that I said will lose some of its outside dining, you know? The speed limit's only going to be around five mile an hour to go through there so we can share the road in this case here, I think.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go to our lightning, oh, we have a retort before we move on. John San Giovanni, what do you want to say?
I would just like to mention that our sister city on the eastern shore, Salisbury, Maryland, has experienced the closed mall like we have now and they've opened that. And, and the success rate, all you have to do, you know, I know it's a little bit of a ride, but if you're ever going to Ocean City, just stop and look at it. It's pretty impressive what, what you can do when you change, when you, when you put forth a positive effort, things can really happen. So then I'll also reference traffic. You ever been in Frederick, Maryland? A lot of outside dining and Marcus Street and Patrick Street and all the other streets intersect that, those areas. Outside dining, I don't think it's affected that much. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. 30 seconds, we go to Ben Walters.
You bring up Salisbury, Maryland, and I could bring up Winchester where the people are extremely happy with the new closed mall. So again, that debate can go on forever. I don't think it's a question if you have a mall that's open or closed. It's a question if you have the people to actually stop there and shop there. That's the key. And we're bringing things up like we're driving through the city and we're driving through the street that we can see left and right into the stores to see what's going on. That was a big item being brought up and I'm thinking, you know, I drove through the town. I drove through Baltimore Street. There were vans parked on the side, delivery vans, cars, you can't see through the windows in any way. All you do is make sure you don't hit somebody and drive through the town. That's all I ever did in Baltimore Street. So I'm for doing something new, innovative, if it is required, but I want to be very, very careful that we don't ruin businesses that are now depending on the mall being closed.
Okay. And David Caparali, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I was just going to reiterate the impact on outside dining. I am on the design committee for the downtown development and we have no intention of cutting square footage. As a matter of fact, anything that may not be potentially lost in width, we are looking to have in the design for length. So we're looking to guarantee everybody the same amount of square footage for their, for the outside dining. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Eugene, you got 30 seconds if you want it. Everybody else did.
All right. When Dave said about the outside dining, I just want to say that through my conversation, unless it's changed, the proprietor of City Light said that he will lose space. So, you know, Dave's saying they all have the same space. He told me that he would lose space.
Okay. Very good. We're going to take another timeout now, another short break. We'll return after these messages on 1270 AM WCBC streaming at WCBC radio dot com. Thank you, Jim Drake. Before we go to the lightning round, there were a couple of questions that came in from the crowd, so we will go to them and they kind of center around rolling mill, so this is a good time to follow up. And we'll go to Eugene Frazier on this follow-up first and then we'll go back to the order we were going in. You said that that project has been flawed. Am I correct in, is that your quote? Or the execution has been flawed?
Well...
Do you, what problems do you have with the way it was executed? Is that, I think that's a fair question.
I've talked to a lot of people there and I know a lot of people there. And where my problem arises is that, you know, when you talked earlier about, you know, all the average, all the stuff that was put out there about what was going on and that went and I think it was said earlier that, you know, that the Times news blew it and put it out there first, you know what I mean? And so before they had a chance and I don't think that was true, you know? And, and even if it was true, they still should have, you know, you know, talked to the people. And like, one of the people I, one of the persons I talked to there, what they said was, look here, you know, we didn't know anything at all until all of a sudden, one of his neighbors comes up and said, hey, they're trying to buy our houses, you know, someone's trying to buy houses. I talked to Susan Bullard who, who lives there in this location there and she said her neighbor, she was there, her neighbor, they, they told them, they went to buy the house and basically told them, if you don't buy it, we're going to get it anyhow. So they went about it the wrong way, I think, putting fear in some of the people's minds when it first started, you know what I mean? So that's why I think it wasn't done right. And the other way I think it wasn't done right was like I said, if they would have went in there and talked to these people up front and said, this is what we want to do, you know, I think they got a better, better understanding with people and people would have, would have maybe been more receptive to it, you know? I just, I don't like the way they, they're treating the people.
So you think there's an atmosphere of distrust from the beginning?
Yes. Yes, definitely.
Okay. So that's a fair, anybody want to follow up on that? You're more than willing or you, we have time for you. Dave Caparali.
Well, you know, it was good enough for about 90% of the tenants at this time. There have been numerous thank you letters. We've gotten them at the city, some of them have been in the newspaper. I mean, look around, it would, I think Mr. Fanzler was quoted saying, you know, he's lived there 45 years and watched the neighborhood deteriorate literally around him. So, I mean, don't, you know, look to a few bad cases. There are many good cases and very many good stories. I think they just had something recently about Sally's dance studio being moved and how helpful everybody was with that, you know? And I honestly, I think if there was an all-out public forum, we wouldn't be any further than we are at this point right now.
Okay.
I guarantee it.
So you think it was destined to have a speed bump then?
Well, I don't think having 90% of the properties is, could be considered a speed bump. I think even on Dave's show the other day, someone used the Cracker Barrel example in Laval. You know, there was somebody I believe that held out and now they have a for-sale sign in their yard as a result of a build-around. So, I mean, you have to look at the whole picture.
Okay. Whoever submitted a question, I hope that was good. Any, John, go ahead, follow up.
So I, whereas I hear all of the concerns and I don't doubt there will always be, no matter what you do, I think there are going to be issues. There's always going to be someone, myself included at times, where you're not going to agree with something. We're at a point, and I can't emphasize this enough, we need to move an agenda. It's time to move forward. We have a plan in place. Let's see what we can do. Let's talk, maybe we need to go back, we need to go back to the table and talk. Maybe we need to open the door again and say, come talk to us, meaning from the city perspective, in that there are possibilities. The build-around idea, I don't know, I don't know if I would want my house in the middle of a project where I open the back door and there's dumpsters in the front door and there's cars parked right up against the front of my house. I think, I think we really can get to the gist of the matter if we just put some effort forth. And I do, I do not want to abandon the project. I say we move forward, whatever it takes. It's, it's a shot in the arm for the city. It is time to move that agenda. As Dave refers to kicking cans down the road, you know, I've been around here a long time, we kicked a lot of cans. It is time to move forward. Take a stand and let's get moving.
Ben, you get last word on this one.
Wonderful, wonderful. The rolling mills, negotiations are all private. And I hear the people say that they were maybe bullied into it or pressured into it. You cannot do that. It's impossible. A negotiation for the price on a home is totally private. It doesn't get published until the end result come through. The laws we have for private property in America are extremely strong and we need them strong because our whole economic model is based on that. I sell you something, you sell something to me. And it has to be done by strict private property rights. So I don't think anything has happened that may be perceived. That's all very true, but if we're on the way now, I think it'll be wonderful and the build-around is not going to be an issue. I think a couple of years from now, people have forgotten all about the issues and the people who live there right now will enjoy new homes and, and a better thing, there was one lady who had not slept in her bed for months, was so happy the city came to buy her house because of the crimes. She didn't dare to sleep in her bed. And those are all the problems that come with it. I remember driving across the cross-town bridge and saw the holes in the, in the roofs of the houses. They are now gone. The blight level and the crime level in that particular area would be lower sustainable level, it could never resurrect itself. This was the only solution and it was time.
Okay. Eugene gets a retort here.
Well, first of all, I grew up on Pioneer Avenue, it was just a walk from that area. And they talked about the blight in that area. The blight in that area is there now because the city made it that way. It wasn't that way. You looked at, I wish I had pictures of it a couple of years ago, that area. I've just built a brand-new house in South Cumberland three years ago. And yes, is there a couple of bad houses in my neighborhood? Yes, there are. You know what I mean? There's bad houses in every neighborhood. This neighborhood was not like they're trying to say it was. This neighborhood was a decent neighborhood. The homes were well-kept. I would say 80% of them were well-kept. And also have stated that like 90% of the homes are bought, well, I'm sorry, that's not true. There's 12 people that are holed out, there's also, that are in the, in the organization. There's also four more people that are not a part of it that will not sell. And so here's the problem. I said, I want to see it go forward. I really do. I want to see something be done in that area because we've wasted enough money there. We got to do something. I agree with John. We have to do something. The problem is, how are we going to do it? Because Ben with his wishful thinking, all these people forget about it a couple of years from now, trust me, I know the people there. They're not going to sell unless you use eminent domain on them. They're not going to sell. So therefore, we got to build around it and John mentioned that I wouldn't want a house like that. I wouldn't either, but guess what? The ones that I've talked to, they don't care. They want to be left in their homes and left alone.
Okay. David Caparali had the card up first and we're negotiating this.
I, there was just one, one other fact I wanted to add. Even before this project was on the table, the city owned seven of the properties in this sector for blight removal. So to say that it wasn't a blighted area, I think is inaccurate. Like I said, even before we had any meetings with any developer, even before the economic study was done, the city owned seven of these properties for blight removal.
Okay. John San Giovanni.
Last time I'll say anything about, yeah, well, no, that's not true. So there are deteriorating neighborhoods in Cumberland. Maybe Eugene's correct, it may be 50 years ago and I would think that across town you would have seen neighborhoods that are not in the condition they're in today. So we have some issues. So we've talked about blighted properties and what we can do and how we can move an agenda on that, in favor of all that. The piece with rolling mill is where it is located. It's the economic opportunity that affords, that it affords to the city that we are trying to address here. That's the important issue. Moving Cumberland forward with a corporate tax base to allow services to continue without any more tax increases on residential properties. It'll be a simple process.
Ben, you get a last word if you want it. You're good?
I think I'm good for right now. Some other subjects I'd like to talk about and like to see them come up.
Okay. Very good. Let's go to the lightning round now. We're going to do a couple of questions quickly. We start with Allegheny College of Maryland's Carlin Riley. Carlin?
What can be, what can be done to make the downtown area safer? This is a particular concern for individuals like myself who are culinary students.
Okay. Ben Walters goes first in the lightning round. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you define safe? Safe for what? Safe for bodily harm?
Bodily harm, drugs, it's a very high-level area for both of those.
Well, I tell you what, I live in the extended part of Baltimore Street and we enjoy walking down in the evenings to go to the downtown area and eat, meet our friends. And like any city, you're going to have areas where things are a little bit unsafe compared to the other areas, but I don't think the downtown area is unsafe at all, any stretch of the imagination. We have police presence there constantly. The only thing we can do if you feel unsafe is, is, you know, make a complaint or find out what the problem is. More police presence in the downtown, I don't know what we needed there, we probably needed somewhere else first. And we're already thin on police the way we are. If I would add more police for it, it probably would not be located directly in the downtown area. I have not heard from the people who have the businesses there, that they feel unsafe. I walk around at nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night. So right now at downtown, the safety, I do not see a problem.
Okay. Very good. We move up to David Caparali.
Currently, we do have code enforcement officers on the downtown mall. Perhaps we could increase their presence. I know just from being down there frequently and being at the farmer's market, the police, as they go their routes, they're through there a lot. You know, that's right by the police station as well. And I'm hoping that the mall redevelopment will have some positive bearing on this aspect as well. And by the way, thanks for the food, it's really good down there the other day. Thank you.
All right. Eugene Frazier.
First of all, I'm going to tell you this here. If you say you have a problem, you have a problem and I'm going to listen to you. You know what I mean? If you don't feel safe, then you don't feel safe. You know what I mean? Just because I go down there and I might feel okay and you don't, so you have a problem. And how to cure that there, I think is, like we said, maybe a little more police presence and like, like Dave said about, you know, with their, I think it's code enforcement? Yeah, yeah, with the code enforcement guys, maybe they could do a little bit better job than what they're doing to make you feel safer. Because I have been down through there and I do know that there's some homeless that hang out, especially up the east end of it more so, you know what I mean? And all, all the way up to the track area in that area. So I know what you're talking about. So there is a little problem and like I said, we need to have a better police presence there. And I also did do a ride along with the police a couple of times, I'm lying, one time. And, and we did, every time, we went through Ballmer Street area a couple of times at night, you know what I mean? You know, just to check and make sure things are okay. So they do have it, probably need a little bit more in what you're getting.
Okay. John San Giovanni?
If you don't feel...
Your time's up already. No, go ahead.
I have nothing to... I have nothing to, no.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So if you don't feel safe, I hear what you're saying. I kind of agree with Dave. Code enforcement, if we could enhance that a bit along with some police presence, that's wonderful. I support anything that makes citizens safe, makes citizens feel safe. And I think the redevelopment downtown may help as well. I think we expose more and people are around more. That may help. Again, let's make you safe and let's find ways to do that. And I think it is the city's obligation to provide and protect their citizens. So if you feel unsafe, then we should try to find and address ways to make you feel more safe. And I believe code enforcement and police are the two entities we'd have to go to for the time being. Unless, if we develop another organization that protects people, and until we do that, we'll have to go with the two we have.
Okay, I don't think we're going to go for follow-ups through this because we're running out of time. Let's go with follow-up question number two, or lightning round question number two. Robert Smith?
Do you have any ideas on how to open up city park facilities to meet the needs of children in Cumberland?
Do I have any? I certainly do. Because I have seen, and again, I know children. I think we've had a little reduction in the child population in our town. That's because of a general reduction in population. But there are playgrounds that I believe really were a focal point for my kids. And I still see, although you don't have the large numbers, I saw the Fairmont Lane, Fairmont Avenue playground closed because of not being utilized. Every time I walked, and I walked that neighborhood a lot, there were kids playing basketball. The tennis courts were in deplorable condition, but kids were playing basketball. At the end of Sperry Terrace, there was another playground where children played. So I cannot see why we couldn't find some open space money. We find money for a variety of other things, and other communities have done as well. So the old post playground that my wife referred to frequently as a child going there and having a good time. I think we can enhance those little Center Street playgrounds now gone. But there are playgrounds that I think we can redevelop and use for children and just maintain with very, very minimal services and depend on open space monies to just improve those services.
It's an excellent question.
Ben Walters, by the way.
Thank you. It's an excellent question. I have talked to a variety of people in local communities all over Cumberland. And that was one of the questions people had. What happened to our playground? Where are they gone? And the thing is this, when you talk to people about this, they say, well, do you have a solution yourself to this problem? Because you live in this area. What would you like to see? And it's amazing how many solutions came up. Like, we have an empty lot there. We have a couple of blighted houses there. Well, how would you do it then? Well, make it into a playground. Great, who's going to monitor it? They step forward. Ideas about putting little garden parks right next to them so people are constantly aware of what's going on in there. It's not the playground itself. You can build one in a couple of weeks. What happens afterward? The children are there unsupervised. Who is going to monitor and make sure it's all down? So those are some of the issues. And I'm happy to report that the people in each community are already thinking way ahead. And when I'm telling them about what one community thinks, they come up with a better idea. So I can see in the future that that item will be solved for you.
Okay, we go to the other end of the table now. David Capperally?
At a time, maybe five to six years ago, I think the fiscal state that the city was in, the answer was cut, cut, cut. And we did. And we've sort of started to come out of that state that we were in before. It's probably a time that I would have been glad not to be on council. But I think one of the things we have been looking at, and there has been discussions of expanding the parking rec. I think we're really taking a hard look at what we can do going forward. The recent tennis court redevelopment at Constitution Park is a good example. That it is on the radar. We're looking ahead. And I think as some of the land shifting, and what I mean by that is potentially for Memorial Hospital site, always keeping in mind some type of open space as some of these areas are redeveloped. Thank you.
Eugene Frazier?
When it comes to talking about playgrounds, no, that's me. I had a great playground growing up. I had a leader that cared about us, took care of us, and made sure we was able to learn and do all sorts of things. And I sorely miss those things. My son, who will be 40 this year, he got to experience a little bit of that there before the demise of playgrounds. I think that we need to take and work. What I would do as a councilperson was try and push the taken and get to the different neighborhoods and talk to the parents and talk to the citizens in those neighborhoods and see if we can't work. You know what I mean? Like I said, I'd love to see the playgrounds come back. Hopefully they're not like the Kelly's and all, we'll never see them again. I'd love to see some of them come back. Because if you give kids a place to go and do, you know what I mean? And keep their mind active, you know what I mean? Then you won't have some of the problems you have, like when it comes with the drug activity and all. And so what I want to do is, I want to take and, like I said, go to every neighborhood. I mean, every neighborhood and talk to the people. Because we need to, kids are our future. We need to invest in our future. And so, like I said, I have grandkids, and John brought a post playground. I live right across from my home. And right over there is, it used to be a playground where, like I said, Carol, I was there many years. Having a good time, Carol. And, you know, and it's sorely needed and it's sorely missed.
Okay, Eugene, hold on to that microphone there. I have one more question, then we're going to take a break and go to closing statements. But this came in from the audience. I'll read it as is. "The tourism for Cumberland is all about the historic value. Putting up an Olive Garden where people live is not retaining the historic value of the city. Why not use the land that is for sale two blocks away at the Martin CSX area?" And that comes from here. And Eugene, if you want to go first with that one, you can respond.
So to understand the question, I mean, you know, why not use the land there from CSX to be used in our tourism industry?
Yeah, I think what they're saying is, instead of doing the rolling mill area...
Well, I don't think, that sounds like more like, why not develop that area into not just tourism, but into anything besides just the rolling mill project? Okay, one of the things I heard about the rolling mill project was the cost. I think it's, they're asking $3 million for it. And also, I heard that it was also like with the way the ground's there, you know what I mean? It has to be cleaned up, so to speak. And, well, the same thing had been done with Martin's and them. So it can be done for other businesses there. And, you know, and CSX now has put new signs up, you know, wanting to sell it. And, you know, through some people I've talked to, you know, $3 million is the asking price. That's not the set price, you know what I mean? So it can be gotten cheaper. And, you know, I would love to see that area, you know, the city get it and develop it. You know what I mean? Into, like I said, I want to see warehouses go there. I want to see distribution centers go there, you know? So that's why I would love to see the city. And as a city councilman, I would approach CSX and see what's the best price we could get that for, you know? And also, another understanding too, is it's my understanding that if it's bought, CSX will take care of making sure the ground is cleaned up.
Okay, John San Giovanni?
Well, if it's for sale, I'd hope the brownfields process is cleared because I would think, that's why it was so long before the Martins' development came along. So I take it since it's been posted for sale, it's safe now to build there. So why not build there and build at rolling mill? Do them both. What difference does it really make? The historical value, I respect the historical value. So I believe that rolling mill is a good site. I do believe where over at Martin's is just as equally as good of a site. So development anywhere in Cumberland, development anywhere in Cumberland is important to me. And I believe we move ahead with whatever we have. And I think you need to have the check to see. I don't even know, there may be a no-compete clause with some of the businesses already there. Martin's has, I think, in their contract, a no-compete clause. So you have to watch what you build on that property because it cannot compete directly with the products being sold by Martin's. So, you know, I think we can make it work. There again, it's an effort, a cooperative effort, and I think we can produce positive results.
Ben Walters?
I know there's been some interest in the property on the far side of Martin's. The city involvement basically should be little. And the reason is as follows. That land is a brownfield. You clean it, somebody pays for the cleanup, and it gets sold. If the city at any time was involved at all, and something happens in the future and laws will start because kids get sick, I don't think the city should be involved, and the laws will be too much. We could not afford the payouts. So I will help them, develop it. If it's clean, leave it between the EPA, the railroads, the buyer, and I will facilitate maybe a tax abatement or something to help it go on. But to be physically involved in that property, no way.
Okay, and David Capperally?
Regarding the property next to Martin's, you know, this wasn't the property that the developer inquired about. This was outside of the targeted area, which we mentioned before, and it had everything to do with freeway access. Much of these costs will be revamped as a result of the property sale and also through taxes in upcoming years. As far as historical value, there is a lot out there to save. I do agree with that, but there's a lot of property out there that is outdated and needs redeveloped.
Okay, very good. We're going to take a quick break. And when we come back, the closing statements here. You're listening to the candidate forum for Cumberland City Council, 1270 AM, WCBC, streaming at WCBCradio.com. It is time for closing statements. To begin, David Capperally led off. I went to Ben Walters, who gave the last opening statement. I gave him the option of going first or last, and he said he'd go last. So we'll start with Dave and move down the line. David?
Well, thank you, Paul. Up here with all these retirees, you know, it's a little, it's a rough neighborhood. I would like to thank the fellow candidates. I know they've given a lot of their time and effort towards a common goal. It's not easy to step out of your comfort zone and be involved in things like that. So thank you, guys, for your commitment to our city. I'd like to thank CBC and AC for the invite tonight. It's been very enjoyable. I would like to thank my wife, Missy, and I'm supposed to say hi to Michael and Julia, who are home listening. We'll be home soon. And I'd like to thank all of you who voted for me four years ago. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you. Being such an important part of your lives has been a very special part of mine and my family's. The reason I'm running again is simple. To continue what we have started. We continue to pave more streets and take out more blighted properties each year while revitalizing downtown and reestablishing neighborhoods remain a priority. When I was here four years ago, the two biggest topics were Memorial Hospital and Canal Place. Now, Memorial Hospital has been razed, and the shops at Canal Place are full, and work on the footers building is continuing on schedule. These and so many other issues is why I feel strongly about serving another term. I am confident in the direction that our city is going, and I don't believe that we can stop now. And that is why I'm asking for your vote in November. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.
Eugene Frazier?
Let me start off by saying that I love Cumberland, as sure all of us up here do. And one of the things I tell people all the time when I say, you know, that I was born here, lived here, and I'm going to die here. I've lived in all four corners of Cumberland. Grew up on the east side, lived on the west side for a few years, up the north end for a few years. And now I currently reside in the south end, where, as I stated before, I just built a new home three years ago. And I could have built that home anywhere. Could have built it in West Virginia, outside of Cumberland, and it'd been more valuable than what it is now. But I did it because I love Cumberland. And I did it also because I love the services that Cumberland provides, our police, fire, and our EMS. I mean, you know, I know that anytime something goes wrong, which I pray to God nothing does, that, just like that, they're going to be there. I'm not knocking the volunteers. It's just that for professional service, you know what I mean? You know, you pick up that phone, they're going to be there in a couple of minutes. I raised three kids here. Two sons, one works at the courthouse, the other one works for CSX. And as I stated before, about a daughter that is currently married now, the town wants to come back here. I have three grandchildren who I'm deeply and passionately in love with and would do anything for to. And I'm concerned about what they grow up and what they have going on around here. I'm a part of Cumberland, Cumberland's a part of me. So that's why I come as part of my family too. And as I said before, I've worked at CSX for 33 years, and I just retired in November. My job kept me out of town, so I wasn't around, you know, to take care of this part of my family here like I wanted to. But now I'm here, and I'm going to be here full-time. And my plan is to take and help Cumberland to succeed. Hopefully, get rid of the drug problem. And if not, at least bring it way back down to levels that they thought about how we used to remember it. And my time's almost up. So what I'll say is this here. If you elect me as your city councilman, you'll have someone that cares, will listen, keep you informed, thoroughly research, and do my homework on all projects that we do in Cumberland. And I'll always do what's best for our city. And one of the things you found out during this forum is that I don't profess to know everything and, you know, and know the answer to every problem. But the one thing I will do, like I said, is I will research it. And I'm a worker. You know, when I worked at CSX, believe me, I mean, when I didn't know something, I went to find, somebody had found out how to do it. Or I looked it up and read about it. I will do my homework when it comes to Cumberland. Trust me on that there. And one thing I want to say, and this is my little slogan, is, citizens of Cumberland, if it matters to you, it matters to me.
John San Giovanni?
Thank you. Thank you, WCBC. Thank you, Allegheny College. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending and listening to all of us this evening. Thank you to my fellow candidates. I've been here my entire life. I've said that so many times. I'm a part of Cumberland. Yep, Cumberland's a part of me. I can't think of any place else I'd rather live. I believe in this town. I think it's a good place to work, live, raise children. I've been committed to this community since I've been a young adult. Went to high school here, Frostburg State University, University of Maryland. I have some educational credentials that I'm proud of. I've worked hard for the state of Maryland. I've worked hard to provide for people in need. And I want to work hard for the city of Cumberland. I will work tirelessly for this town. I believe that we're on the verge of making some promising changes, and I certainly want to be a part of it. I do not want to leave anything unturned or anything behind. I believe that you get out there and you work, and you work hard, and you hold true to your beliefs, and you follow through what you say you're going to do. You know, I've served on community boards, coached Little League, coached Hot Stove League, youth football, done a variety of things. I've worked on school boards and other civic and community boards. I'd like to serve Cumberland in yet another way. I'd like to serve as a city councilman. I believe that I have a lot to offer. I believe that it's in my heart. I believe that I am Cumberland, Maryland. I've had an opportunity to live many other places and never have left this town. Never even thought one time to leave this town. So Carol and I raised two children here. This has been home for us. We're both native Cumberlanders. We have no intentions of going anywhere, and we're proud of being here. We're proud to be part of this community. I think that I have made a mark on this community. I just was recently endorsed by AFSCME 112, a public service union. I've been endorsed by Western Maryland Building and Construction Trades. I've been endorsed by Western Maryland Central Labor Council. And most proudly, I'm endorsed by our current city council, two city councilmen, Dave Capperally and Seth Bernard. So I think I am Cumberland, and I would like to do one more thing in my lifetime, and that's to serve as a city councilman for the city of Cumberland. You won't go wrong. Invest in Cumberland's future by voting for John San Giovanni on November the 8th. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, Ben Walters?
I'd like to thank the Allegheny County of Maryland and the WCBC and the Democracy Commission for hosting this. It gives us all an opportunity to explain why we want to run for city council and our commitments to the city. Everybody here is deeply committed to Cumberland, and that shows. So the question is now, what have they done for Cumberland so far? What kind of leadership have been shown? And I'm not talking about their careers. I'm not talking about things you do for your clubs or committee. What have you done for the city? Years ago, when there was a person who wanted to start a methadone clinic within a stone's throw of West Side School, I knocked on doors, rallied the community against that, and it did not happen. I don't think we need a methadone clinic right next to my school. After that, the city asked me to join them on the Historic Preservation Commission. I did that for almost five years, until my job got in the way and had to give it up. Since I retired, I wasn't retired a year, and the city asked me to do planning and zoning. I've been on there now for two years and chaired a commission. Recently, I found a situation or an issue that was unresolved for years since Mayor Wykoff. And I picked up on that, talked to my neighbors, came up with a solution together, engineered a solution, and then wrote a grant without any help, went to Annapolis, testified before the House and Senate subcommittees, got the money for it, and dropped the whole package off at the city. And now it's in progress of being done. There's still a couple of issues being worked out. I'm still in the loop. We'll work it out. What I'm saying is, leadership is not just what you've done in the past. Leadership is when you turn around on a dime, when things come your way that you need to address immediately.